And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Parker.
Here.
Marge.
Here.
Collins, Traynor, Eil, Lawson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Ory. Rutherford.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Six members present, we have a quorum. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda for the recess meeting?
It's all moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Miller. Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Warner.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Lawson.
Here.
Miller?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
The agenda is approved. First item up will be discussed and take any action, necessary action regarding the 2013-2014 school year budget revision. Last Thursday night, the County Commission Budget Finance Committee met their recommendation. They had two options. The first option was to report to the full commission the budget that we approved last week, which was the full, the required local match plus the extra money that we had asked for, for our SROs. Their second option was to fund only the local required match. And so they voted to approve the local required match, not anymore. And so therefore, we've got a revised budget, I think.
I saw it. Big box in here.
Richard has a revised budget. As far as I know, the budget is, is the same. We'll ask Richard to make sure here. Yeah. Richard, the budget tonight that we're voting on, it's identical to the one we passed last week with the exception of the extra $345,000. Is that, is that?
The SROs.
Right. And so the proper motion tonight would be to approve this revised budget and send it to the County Commission this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be, so can I have a motion to get us where we can discuss it, approving the revised 2013-2014 school year budget?
Mr. Chairman, I move. Motion, please.
Motion by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Richter.
Since we've taken the SROs out, and I understand that we actually need a budget to do a budget amendment, I'm just trying to ask the director of schools, Mr. Poston, what is your intentions on funding the SROs at this point since we failed to get any funding from the County Commission, which we all knew probably was wishing on Santa Claus? But it really bothers me that, that we didn't get the funding, but it comes back to us now. I know from my heart, I think it's a very important issue that faces this county right now, and I would love to see us find a way to fund this, or to kill it, and budget it every how it has to be done. So you plan?
My intentions, my hopes and goals have not changed. I'll do everything I can to make sure every school has a resource officer, and if things are budgeting, so I'll do everything I can to work with the commission to get resource officers.
Mr. Chairman, if we approve the budget tonight, we can have a budget amendment ready by the next meeting.
By the next meeting, I would think.
We do that, Mr. Chairman. What are you going to do, the real life funds?
It would be, yeah, it would be taking the money for the positions out of the undesignated fund balance.
And then the funds from the virtual schools and COPS grants, if we get one, could go back to replenish the undesignated fund. Is that not right, Mr. Poston?
That's what I understand.
Yes. There would have been more than one. I'll grant, I'll grant, grant for four years around. As far as your question, yes, the legislature could be prepared for relying on funds, or the government actually, the plan requests for the virtual schools, or reviews. I doubt that you'd be able to rely on, on grant funds. You have certain things to deal with.
Okay.
So you might be exposed to some amount, I understand. But without a motion, Mr. Chairman, we all agree with the leadership of Mr. Poston. I won't make a vote.
Yeah, I think Donnie's made it clear his intentions of a budget amendment next month, so.
And I have just, if I could, I have just a couple of other questions about the budget. The, are we expecting to have more kids this year, Mr. Poston, or are we?
We are. That's, and it could run, it could vote.
Right.
We're anxious by the number of students, 225, like the county.
So if we have those kids, then about a particular time in September or late August, you'll be looking at pupil-to-teacher ratio and seeing if you need more teachers.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah. Once school starts for the first few weeks, serving, monitoring, adjusting, and all those figures, that, that will continue to go on for several, several days and then weeks. We'll have some kids if we might even come to school about Labor Day.
Yeah, you were right last year, you said, I don't want to keep beating the old drum because I've said this over and over and over, but I'll ask it one more time. In this year's budget, are we just looking at getting by with compliance, or are we maybe just trying to look, maybe get a little bit smaller classroom sizes?
Well, because of the steps that we've taken in the last few days, pupil-to-teacher ratio classroom is going to be smaller. And I feel real good about where we are. We're serving teachers to the good right now. I'm surprised in some areas that the numbers are so close and yet the numbers are falling in place of projecting. That could change quickly.
I understand. The, Mr. Lawson, you mentioned this, about another teacher to work with the ACTs. Have we got?
We've got, got a plan in place. In fact, reverse season teachers, that's correct, things that's with new, extended contracts on, on ACT. I would give the names again, I'll be careful. But the reverse season teachers, that will make a huge difference, I think, in ACT classes.
She's working on that, she has, I think, two, three, that are hard, and she feels good about the two or three that she's talked to, that they want to do like in the contract that we're paying out here. I would think some of it might be out of Europe and Israel, for example, training, and he could probably tell you more about that, but for sure, two or three are what we're working on.
We don't want this to be just a short-term thing. We don't just sustain it. We feel we don't have enough teachers that we have, plans that are often left behind, so.
Two more questions, and I'll rush. The Alternative Learning Center, the Learning Academy, I understand the funding will stay the same. I would hope, and this is just a suggestion and encouragement, I would hope that your administration would look at being able to look for additional funds this year, get started to be able to handle more students, if I still see the need to put more in, to be approved, more computers, more classroom furniture, whatever, to have their ready-to-go, if that needs, right?
And that's, that's also our desire. And we'll do everything their parents command, and not just be a school where children are falling for disciplinary reasons, where their kids fall into the cracks and be dependent on.
Yeah, we, and I think most of us, at least the conversations I've had with other board members, we would like to see that program really succeed. I mean, and it's difficult for my part. I just think we really need to focus on being a real good, and I think your staff changes will reflect that. And I forgot the other one, so I'll just.
Any other questions, Eugene?
Okay, now, now we're voting, if we vote on this budget, we, this does not fund the SROs off. Okay. So we're anticipating that maybe if we have an enrollment of at us county students in the virtual school, we'll get that BEP money within this county, and that will help to offset the expense of hiring SRO officers.
That will have, yeah, that's just one.
How much are you anticipating on the virtual school? Or do you have any way in the world of really making an estimate on that?
Jeff, I've gotten some estimates from Mr. Brandon Dersky's internet, and it's a shot in the dark. We don't know, Eugene, but I can say some 40% of 100,000, but that'd be safe.
That won't hurt but two SROs.
No, it cares. And then, of course, that grant would help with about the full work, we think. So, we're actually real creative in order to make the funds available to get them in all places. And we may do better than we're expecting. They do a whole lot of work. I'm doing it now.
And we, because when we, when we originally accepted the virtual schools, the money was already earmarked. Richter had already made the motion to earmark that money for that purpose, so we'd already had those funds earmarked for, to be designated for, for the SROs, so. Richard, I guess if, if we get the COPS grant, obviously, since that's a specific grant, it would have to go into the, I guess, the school resource line item. You know, if that, if that occurs, and, you know, once we approve our budget amendment next month, and if it's approved by the commission, if we get the grant and we get the virtual schools money, will we be able to decrease our equity in that and return it back to the undesignated fund balance if we run it, you know, if we exceed virtual school money or COPS grant? Okay. And of course, the budget amendment is contingent on the County Commission. I mean, we'll, we'll have to go at them again next month, you know, and so we'll need to, yeah, Richard.
One other point on the COPS grant is which entity, which one you see the grant, is forebend, forebend contract, insurance department, as far as I'm concerned, which insurance department label grant.
Because the Sheriff's Department had to actually apply for the grant, because it was a governmental organ, it was, they were the, the government entity that had to apply for it, so. Any other questions or anything? Are you ready to vote on the revised 2013-2014 school year budget? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Parker.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Lawson.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Ory. Rutherford.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Now, I want to explain my no vote, since we have some of our commissioners very close to the school department, I would hate for a budget to go through without them having some input into it, so when this goes back to them, they'll get to vote this time, unless they go on a double vacation.
They won't vote tonight.
I know, not tonight, but there'll be another vote, there has to be.
They have nothing to vote on. Right, Richard, they haven't, there's nothing to vote on. They, they voted to approve it at the local required match. They have nothing to vote on, so, so the motion fails. We're on to item number two, consider abolishing the safety athlete director position. Donnie?
All right, let me give you a little history of, of where we are and the reason I'm doing this. Back in June, as you know, we, we're told that we had lost our coordinated school health program, or some items, and the grant needed to be changed and upgraded. We made a trip to Nashville and pleaded with them to reconsider and let us do what we could to make, make the program work. So one of the representatives came and spent the day with us, and I'm recommending that we do away with Mr. Bruce's position as it is, because the lady, the Nashville office said many of the things that he was doing, he could do under this program and actually enhance each other, some of the very things he's already doing, he could do with this position, that'll save, that'll save the county some more than $60,000 plus $20,000 too, and he could take over as a coordinated school health project person, which is a 12-month position, and he'll call in areas that he would not be able to do, have, let his department work on this as it used to, be workman's comp, and he will not be able to continue the work that he's doing, workman's comp, and some of the other things he can do, and, or some of the safety training, and the work that has been done, coaches, evaluating them and, and their work, sports, all that's the high school anyhow, so everything else, they said he can continue to do under the guidance. And we, we rewrote the program, they approved it, we got a certification today, and so that's the reason I'm making that recommendation, that we abolish that position, and my question for Bruce to be coordinated school health person for the next 12 months.
It's a pleasure, Ford.
I saw a move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second, with any, any discussion?
Donnie, I'd like to ask you a question. Now, you're saying, how are you planning that will be carved out as this athletic, that'll be done in that? Yeah, he could do most of that even under this, this program too. But he will be under the board now? Now, the evaluation part is just a title change. He'll be doing a whole lot more than, than part of the coordinated school health person will do, but everybody on our staff's picking up a few extra jobs. And the safety part, how long he still? The part, yeah, he could still do the safety training, he does all that for school anyhow. Now, the, the other part was the workman's comp part, he cannot do that. Now, that is correct, Donnie, that's what he said. That's the only area that's said he does not do under this grant.
With somebody else's decision.
Yeah, we'll have to do that, each department will have to do that, someone, each department will have to care. In other words, if someone like Miss Vicki's program gets hurt, that she will have to investigate that. And then, of course, Karen does most of the work there in the office, and we'll all assist for that, everyone else. And workman's comp case.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Parker.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
All right. That concludes our agenda. I will conclude by saying, as one of the primary responsibilities of a board chairman is to work with the superintendent on a budget, due to the fact that this board can't pass a budget, effective August the 1st, I resign my chairmanship, so I can let somebody else worry about it at that point. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion or adjourn?
The Calhoun County July Commission meeting in order, asking Mr. Ory to move prayer and leave, if anyone would stand.
Thank you, Your Heavenly Father, this good day, the heavenly Jesus, blesses your honor. Thank you for all that you give us, thank you for our children, our family, Your Father. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity, Your Heavenly Father, to come and set these seats and serve our country. I pray, Lord, that you'll give us knowledge and understanding, make the best decisions, Your Heavenly Father. Thank you for all that you do for us, but most of all, Your Heavenly Father, thank you for the salvation. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure.
Eleven members present. Marie Ayers, Terry Sealy, Bob Walton, Bobby White, or absent. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17th, and the June 47th. Yes, permission. We have a motion by Ory, seconded by David Anderson, to approve the minutes of June 17th and June 47th, 2013.
Yes.
Any discussion, any question? Ready to vote. All those in favor, vote yes, the pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Eleven yes, four absent. Minutes are approved. We have six, six notary renewals. They are Jerry Lee, Jeffries, Angela D. Wilson, Doris Sharp, Sharon A. Pierce, Johnny E. Jones, and Vanda Killor. I'll entertain a motion to approve the notary renewals.
Motion to approve the renewals, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Ory, seconded by Johnny Bruce. Any discussion, any question? Be ready to vote. All those in favor of approval of the renewals, vote yes, the pressure confirmed button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Eleven yes, four absent. Read the vote, ma'am.
Atkins yes, Bailey yes, Bayer yes, Bruce yes, Davis yes, Evan yes, Holly yes, Hatmaker yes, Nance yes, Ory yes, Rutherford yes.
Okay. We have two new applicants over the public, Shirley LaRae Poston and John Lynn Letter.
Motion to approve the new applicants.
Second. Motion by Ory, seconded by Wendell Bailey, to approve the new notary applicants. Any discussion, any question? All those in favor, vote yes, the pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Eleven yes, four absent. Three who voted.
Atkins yes, Bailey yes, Bayer yes, Bruce yes, Davis yes, Evan yes, Holly yes, Hatmaker yes, Nance yes, Ory yes, and Rutherford yes.
The new applicants are approved. We'll entertain a motion to approve committee reports and minutes.
Motion to approve the committee reports and minutes, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion, I hear a second. A second by Johnny Bruce.
Is that a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does this include the minutes from the animal control advisory board?
No. Any other questions? All those in favor of approval of the committee reports and minutes, vote yes, the pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change? Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Eleven yes, four absent. Committee reports are approved. The school board failed to approve their budget tonight, so there's nothing to approve under budget amendments or other funding resolution. We will have to just wait and see whether they have a official call meeting to take up their budget, or whether they wait till next month. That's the best we can do. Moving on to.
Can I ask you a question, Michael?
Okay.
We're on a continuing resolution until August 30?
Ninety-two days, is that what it was? Sixty-two, ninety-two.
Sixty days or ninety days? I can't remember.
Sixty-two days.
Sixty. Okay, thank you.
Sixty-two. Be early before the September meeting.
We approved it, I assume?
Yeah. David May, I should, I think.
We approved it.
But it didn't take effect to July 1st.
Am I right? Now they have to look back and see.
We're still dipping, dipping on last year.
Okay, now moving on to the reports from county officials and departments. Entertain a motion to, a motion by Johnny Bruce, seconded by Rusty Ory. Any questions?
Is this including animal advisory?
I don't know that it includes the advisory board.
Thank you. Thank you. I was told there was something brought up. I had to leave early, because we had a meeting here. I had to leave that meeting up there early. It brought to my attention that the chair has added to, wants to make a change to the rules, saying he's the only one that can call a meeting, the advisory board.
I think once the day, once y'all continue to meet and go all the way through, they're going to go through the hours of county animal orders, to look at the whole thing, if there are any changes that they want to make, and once they do that, that they'll bring all those changes to the animal control committee, committee.
We have a meeting tomorrow night at five.
Meeting tomorrow night at, take it. Five o'clock, at LaFollette City Hall.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions about the reports? All those in favor of approving the reports, vote yes, the pressure confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Eleven yes, four absent. Moving on to other matters, I think this is just for information, there's a copy of a motion for dismissal of John Bond versus Jerry Cross in there. Do you want to make any kind of a statement or anything?
It was dismissed, though.
Yeah.
That's it for five years, ain't it?
And then the other piece is the solar panel info concerning the school buildings. If I have a question about that?
I did.
Okay.
I, I don't have the report with me, I didn't read it, so who?
Josh may be able to.
Is he here?
Enlighten us a little bit on that. The solar panel info.
Yeah. Just off the top of my head, the first three months are about $43,000 or $45,000 dollars due to high school, the college facilities side. Each school is averaging about $1,000 to $1,500 dollars of each side. I know this story last Thursday night, I bought a, bought a building for school last month, their electric bill was $1,300, their solar credit was $1,600. So we bought a building, we don't have to pay a lot. There's no electric building, a water building, they have a credit, but the first three months is about $40,000 or $45,000, the first three months.
That was after the payment was made. That's what they came up with extra, right, Josh?
Did you hear me? Everywhere, you said it's running between 15, 13, 15. That's after the payment's made to pay for them too. That's the credit that they get for.
Okay, back to that. So what's the payment on the solar panels? Yeah. Because I think that may be misleading for. Because I think that may be misleading for it to leave in the public to believe we're paying that much money when actually we're paying that back on the solar panels.
I think it's, you know, it takes money to make these.
Well, it does, but then we'll be paying that for twenty years, is that correct?
The biggest number is...
Fifteen.
Something revised, maybe it's the bodies part, it's ten. Well, that was a little bit rich on one point three. The other three sides came on, double the dollar code. There's one point six on minutes.
I think I asked him a question.
I remember, sir. Sixteen years.
I think I asked Josh a question.
Payments plus making extra money. It was supposed to generate around nine thousand, the sites and the polyglot utility side. And it ended up generating two months in a row, fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars.
It's averaging the nine sides on the local hill we saw today, fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars.
Hey, Josh, what's the line expectancy of the solar panels?
Uh, they do a story, uh, the Knoxville media has done some really good stories on solar panels in the press recently. Uh, Robbie Humphins, I believe, in one of the articles said that the solar panels have a lot of expectancy, twenty to thirty years now.
And we're responsible for how many years?
They're paying. Is it fifteen years?
You make more than you're supposed to, obviously, you don't have to pay a day.
Well, I think we've got a, the warranty runs out in ten years, is that right?
Yeah.
The bond, the repayment of the bond is fifteen years, the contract that the school system has with TBI.
Okay, so they bring some other question. The contract with the company installed, that was how much per year, or still?
Maintenance contract.
Maintenance contract.
Eight hundred fifty dollars?
Eight?
Eighteen.
Because when you talk about how much it's generated, you've also got to talk about how much comes out of that to support the system.
The same happens with, you know, what, a hundred and four thousand?
I, yeah, I agree. I agree. I don't know.
But if you look at it, it's a standpoint of bringing revenue in. This body here has very few ways to bring, generate revenue. They actually generate some revenue from our schools.
Each school's, uh, TBI, each school's, nine school sites, they're eligible for a thousand dollar rebate per side. I think that's already been a lot of the question for those folks.
Steve Rutherford?
Mr. Parker, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Just have a question for you. Now, you know, we're talking about money. They promised each school, what, thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Thirteen to fifteen year, a year.
Okay, now, so that, is that above and beyond the, I guess, the credits that we've earned and everything?
The way that, the way that the financial forecast was picked out is that there was the net payment, the note paper each year, if anything over that per school side, that money would be cut back directly into the school. That's predicted to be around twelve to fifteen hundred, I think, a year.
Per school?
Per school.
Per school. But like White Oak, if they're, you know, they didn't have electric bill, right? So are they gonna get more of that money or when, who, who gives us that money or whatever?
Forty-dollar credit right now, so I said the credit is just keep it, keep it like, you know. Just like, you know. And I apologize if my mind's blurry, I can give schools a bunch of tax checks, so, you know, I'm just a little lumpy sometimes.
Wait.
Beverly?
Uh, by our next meeting, can somebody tell us what, what the bond payments?
I can say it right now, here.
Twenty is...
Yes, I looked it up, it was all done, the inmates.
I got one on the chart on it, you can scan it, right?
Yes, so it's very...
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, moving on. I don't have anything. Beverly had asked, uh, to put the vending machines on the agenda. Out, uh... In nineteen ninety-one, the commission created an agreement with, uh... Don Dealback. And it's been in effect since then. Uh, the Kansas City Business Enterprises just through the Department of Human Services, they're the ones that, uh, I get the grant, uh, third-party, third-party vending contracts and, uh, do this for the, uh... Blind association, whatever the association is called, but, uh... Talked to, uh, talked to those folks and they are aware that we're building the, uh, the Justice Center and so forth. And they're aware of the contract that they have with, with Don. And their thinking was that just to leave it like it is, and then whenever the new jail or justice center is completed, that they will come and look that over and then they will either do a, hold you a contract, contract with some blind vendor or whatever, that's, that's what you have to go through.
So I'm, I'm not the one that's wanting to go through it, but I've got a gentleman back here, Randy McLaun, he's interested in putting a bid in for that vending machine or whatever he needs to do. Could you give him that information to contact those people with him?
I can. I can.
So, is that okay with you, Randy? If he gives you the information that he has in contacting these people to see what you need to do to see about the vending machines here at the courthouse?
I'll, I'll give you that information.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was the contract with Don Dealback or?
It is an agreement with Don.
But they're not even in the loop, in all actuality?
Well, no, they, yeah, that's true. They, they have, have, uh, made a third-party vending agreement between them and Don, and the county has one between the county and Don, so that's just the way it ends. There's also, uh, another organization that was involved in it back in two thousand three. This, the, uh, vicinity, um, apparently they were some sort of, uh... They had some sort of agreement with the, uh, Department of Human Services as well. And, uh, Mr. Coker had, uh, written a letter to them on behalf of, of Don Dealback to get, uh... That agreement to continue to be approved. So that's pretty much where we are.
Is there a state law that says we have to go through?
Yeah, yes, it's, uh, yeah, TCA seventy-one dash four dash five oh four.
Can you provide each of us with a copy of the placement? Estimated revenue is...
When it, when it first started, you had, uh, like, there was a whole lot of accounting and information that you have to give, provide to them. And, uh, later on, two thousand seven, they just made it a, just a fee instead of going through all this accounting cost. He didn't have, well, it was all machines we got out here. It's just the two, two drink machines and a, and a candy machine. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
For the benefit of the public, which is, I know, it's a tough one, it's a difficult one. Before, before Mr. Dealback, uh, had this agreement, and then he didn't qualify with the blind organization. There was a, uh, a lady, uh, that, that was blind that had a booth here in the lobby of the courthouse that operated, uh, the concessions here in the courthouse. We didn't have the same types of machines that we have now. They sold candy and, you know, small items, and it was her, her setup was right outside the front doors of the courthouse here. And, uh, and then after, after, if we can't, I, I don't remember what happened to her, but they had a really hard time finding anybody that, that wanted to do it. Uh, and, and Don Dealback, I guess you could say he volunteered, but, uh, but he did qualify under their, uh, guidelines as, as blind, uh, non-eyes. And they, uh, when, when we engaged them in some other negotiations back a few years ago, they sent two or three people here from that. And, uh, they came more than once to look at the courthouse and make their own, uh, survey of, of what, uh, what they thought the demand would be and the volume of, of drinks that would be sold. And the result of that was that they determined that it was best to just leave it as it was because they didn't think they could find anybody that would do it. And it's just sort of been through until today. Do you remember the, the lady that, that just did that?
I don't remember the name of the lady. With, with the commissary in place, or we don't have vending machines over here also?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. The commissary is just for the prison, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and this, this does have a person's license. It's just the, this law gives them the right of first refusal. So, you know, it, it could be that the county itself winds up as an organization which, which does it. You just have to see what kind of opportunities you have to talk to them about, but they have a right of first.
Queen?
Yes.
Just curious, who takes the money out of the machines and keeps candy and everything?
Me.
Okay, well, no.
As long as, as long as Don is all, uh...
You're just an extension.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Beverly?
That's it.
Okay. Tom?
Do you, I think you got your question answered about the, uh, Jeff answered it about the budget, civil defense.
He gave me some kind of answer. I, I still think this line item that, under a part-time employee, it's not coming out of its budget space. As long as he can assure me there's no increase to that, that position.
Right.
As this lawyer says. Did you, uh, find out on fire hydrants?
Uh, if it's in the, if there's money in the capital projects to, and everybody agrees to, to move some over there, well, then, yeah, it's, it'll be there.
I, I found out they, as of July 1st, there was a rate increase and it's now gonna cost us four thousand dollars to do that.
Yeah.
That's what it's been costing.
It used to be thirty-seven hundred, it's been, the last few we've done, it's been over four hundred.
Been doing since '06. They said it was a rate increase, a new rate as of July 1st. So I'm telling them they're wrong. It's, I know. What Eddie Cox said. He's a charmer. I've been doing about two a year and it's been four thousand dollars. It's five hundred dollars goes to engineering, so much goes to, for permit, an actual gun in, but it is. I look at it since the break came out, I said, make sure, because I said, well, that'll be enough. Do you know what it would cost us to have done it before the line was wasted? Compared what it costed up for a colletile, I can't come here for a time. Didn't they put no T's in it, Don? No. At the end of the line? At the end of the line before. And they gonna put, they gonna put a hive in that? It's already there. Line's done. There's already grass for them. All they do right now is do it as tabs. Yeah. Cause the lines, lines aren't full, is it? It's not flowed yet. They not be wet. I thought eighty-two is wet. I'm, I'm, I don't work, you know, it's not my cup of tea, but I... They're still doing tabs, I can't, I do, be doing wet, actually working once. I'll be told you it's wet, it's wet, because they've got sets like a month, and they gonna take us, and they run back through and they re-coronate it, and then I'll fix it.
Okay. Sue Nance?
Oh, is it my turn?
Sure, sir.
Animal shelter report.
Okay. We, I have been in touch with a person that is coming this week to give us some info about a better way to, hopefully a better way to operate. And we should know something in about a week or so.
Did the TBI finish their report?
Uh, I don't know if they finished their interviews or not. They were supposed to, it's either Friday or today. And I'll get in touch with Lori Phillips-Jones and find out where that... When I find out something, I'll leave Bailey alone.
So you still don't have the date that you think it's gonna?
No, but it, it shouldn't be long, for sure, it's a tough one to have.
That's on.
Uh, anybody, anything else, Sue?
No, that's on.
Okay.
Quick question. Do you know what we paid for the backhoe at the environmental services?
Thirty-five thousand, I think.
What guys can do enough for time, Dave?
Got what?
Some new dumpsters?
Yes. July the eighteenth. Harry Burton Day. What time, Joe?
Twelve o'clock to one-thirty.
Here at the courthouse?
Yes.
Harry Burton has been foreman of the grand jury for thirty-nine years.
What time is it?
Twelve o'clock to one-thirty, here at the courthouse.
Twelve or eleven?
Twelve.
Alvin Evans?
You were gonna, you were gonna find out, we could get the, our, uh, center open on Sundays?
At the Bates Center.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Uh, they're still trying to work that out, trying to get the drivers and so forth to where they can dump over at, uh, Scott County on Saturdays. But I'll let you know soon as I can find out. Joe?
Everybody should invite any persons that you think might be interested in coming to this event and stuff. If I'm looking, uh, we would ask, uh, that you invite anybody that you think might want to.
Twelve o'clock to July the eighteenth. There's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Johnny Bruce, seconded by Steve Rutherford. We are adjourned, and thank you all.